Welcome to the Wednesday, September 18th work session meeting of the Penfield Town Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will Clerk Sue please call the roll?
Barry?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Lee House?
Here.
Ackenden?
Here.
Next item on the agenda.
Voting already.
I'm ready to go.
Voting adjourned.
Anybody like to make a motion to approve the minutes, or any?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Wonderful.
I'll second.
Okay, vote please.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Lee House?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Ecklisch?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, I didn't think we had any guests, but do we have a guest? Or you're just coming here?
That's the applicant for 1350 is here in case any questions pop up.
Perfect. All right, well, that's the first action item. Carrie, I'll let you take it from here.
Perfect. Just as a reminder, so this is an application for a special use permit to allow the space formerly occupied by the Orc Orchard canoe kayak business to be converted to a coffee house. The public hearing was conducted earlier this month. There were no speakers except for the applicant himself and the county has completed their 239M review. It was referred because it's on a state road. They didn't identify any issues or concerns. In their memo, they do a sort of a templated response and they identified that the applicant should reach out to Monroe County Department of Health to ensure that any of those approvals are needed. If the town board didn't have any issues, questions, or objections, I would be preparing a resolution to approve the special use permit as applied for.
And just to confirm, it's just that building we're looking at here on the screen to the right. Is the left side still being utilized as a?
The marina.
The marina is using that still?
The South Bay Marina, which you can't see behind the boat right now, is, that's still occupying, they have a storefront space. So this is a separate area that would be renovated internally or in the interior to do the coffee house. The applicant described in the public hearing that they would have indoor entertainment, acoustic style, and they would have baked goods for sale. Nothing was being prepared on the site. In other words, no cooking was happening at the location.
And maybe ice cream at the?
Yeah, there is an outbuilding existing currently that's got set up for windows. It almost looks like it might have been used for something similar. So they talked about interior renovation of that as well, potentially for some future ice cream sales.
What do we have to do to move this forward, Carrie?
It would be seeking the town board's authorization to prepare a resolution for the October 2 legislative meeting.
I'll make the motion to drop that resolution for the October 2 meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, vote please, Sue.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Lee House?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Ecklisch?
Aye.
All aye.
Terrific. LVO's on the road, right?
Yes.
So then you are all set and you are free to go, as we tell everybody. You're certainly welcome to stay, but.
Thank you, guys.
Take care.
Have a good night.
I'm gonna look forward to that, that opening. That sounds so fun.
All right, next item on the agenda is presentation of the 2023 tentative budget. And tonight, we have our comptroller, Sarah Reynolds, here. I'll just make a couple comments on the budget. This is preliminary and still it's on me. I've got some homework to do and a few items. We're also meeting with our advisor to talk about the financing of the DPW garage, which will play into this budget. I think it'll be a positive impact, but that discussion's gonna happen pretty quick, next week. And we're, in this budget is based on projections on what we thought would happen, but now that we're, we've gone down the road, we got firm bids that are sealed, they're done, if I'm saying that right. And then financing this, and how we finance this will play into the budget next year. So more to come on that. So I'll turn it over to Sarah, and welcome, Sarah. This, I think, is your, certainly your first work session, first meeting.
This is. Thank you Supervisor Lee House. One of the primary responsibilities of the town board is to adopt a balanced budget that accurately estimates revenues and expenditures of the town for the coming fiscal year. Meetings have taken place since early this summer between our department heads, the supervisor, and I to discuss their budget requests for 2025. This presentation is a high-level overview of the tentative 2025 budget. The public hearing on the preliminary budget will be Wednesday, October 2. In the weeks following that hearing, the town board will work to finalize the 2025 budget for adoption at the October 30 meeting. I thank the town board in advance for their commitment. This pie chart provides a visual reminder regarding the allocation of property tax dollars. School taxes comprise 69%. The county equals 24%. And at 7%, the town is the smallest share. The 7% allows the town to provide the necessary services of public works such as sidewalk and park maintenance, recreation, library services, as well as facets of public safety such as plowing, upon which residents depend. The tentative budget for fiscal year 2025 includes appropriations totaling $23.9 million. That is an increase of $3.7 million over the 2024 budget. However, we are currently under the tax levy increase allowed by New York State and non-tax revenues have increased likewise. At 57% of the budget, payroll and benefits will be largely impacted by the rising cost of insurance premiums, estimated at a 17% increase. Despite the increase, the percentage of distribution is virtually unchanged from last year. Debt service remains flat. Contractual expenditures is down 5% from last year, and equipment and capital outlay is increased by 5%. Accounting for approximately 18% of the tentative budget is approximately $4.2 million appropriated for equipment and capital outlay. This includes heavy-duty equipment such as new plows and an excavator, improvements to park amenities, new sidewalks, facility improvements including the installation of air conditioning in the Penfield Community Center gym, as well as funding for our annual road program and sewer improvements. In the 2025 tentative budget, the Department of Public Works comprises the largest budget appropriations at approximately 50% of the total. Consistent with last year, the town library appropriations are 9%, while the allocation to our recreation department is 6% of the total budget. The town of Penfield continues to see growth in planned development as well as in home improvement investments. The valuation increased to $4.4 billion this year, a slight increase from 2024 of $4.3 This slide is a summary of the tentative budget for the general governmental funds. Approximately $23.9 million in total appropriations are proposed. Non-tax revenues are estimated at nearly $13.5 million. A fund balance contribution from the general fund, highway restricted fund balance, and library fund totaling $1,184,500 offsets appropriations expense, resulting in a tax levy of $9.2 million. With the town's taxable assessment at $4.4 billion, the anticipated tax rate would remain flat at $2.10 per 1,000. This means that, for an average household valued at $271,000, the taxes are anticipated to be $569.31 for the general governmental portion of the tax bill. That represents a decrease of $11.74 based on the average household value. The total non-tax revenues expected to be received in 2025 are estimated higher than in 2024. Though we still budget non-tax revenues conservatively, we have consistently seen growth in sales tax, mortgage tax, and interest rates. The total estimated cost for residential sewer services is $81.28, which is about $11.46 less than 2024. As the debt service on the sewer infrastructure is paid off, appropriations are shifted for the maintenance and upkeep of these assets. This is the seventh year in a row that the rate has decreased. For 2025, the drainage rate will increase approximately 6 cents. This funding is for the townwide drainage maintenance while adhering to all federal and state stormwater regulations. The town's drainage system is extensive and includes all retention and detention ponds as well as our creeks and surface drainage. The lighting district rates remain flat. And this final slide represents a summary of the town's tentative budget inclusive of all properties. Specific to the Highway Equipment Reserve Fund balance, appropriations are proposed to support in part the purchase of two 10-wheel dump trucks with plow and sulter attachments, a mini excavator, and a skid steer brim attachment. These purchases were anticipated for 2025 as part of the DPW's multi-year equipment plan. The total town tax burden for 2025 would decrease over 2024 by approximately $76,000. Let's see, October 2 is the public hearing on the 2025 preliminary budget where public comments will be received. From October 3 to the 25th, the town board will review comments and develop the final budget. On October 30, the town board, at the town board legislative meeting, the town board will adopt the final 2025 budget.
Okay. So any discussion? Now, I'll just say that this is very preliminary. We're trying to get up to speed, especially before the public hearing. I'm not sure if there's any comments or... I'll reiterate, the next week, we're gonna have a meeting regarding the debt service for the DPW, which could affect this one way or the other. And we have ongoing discussions on compensation and a few other items.
I think this is, that's the next steps, as you've highlighted, so put a lot of time into it thus far. Sarah, thank you so much for the work you've been doing. I know, starting when you did at this critical time, has been, I'm sure, a little bit of a challenge, but you've done a great job and we're almost there. So I think we've got a little more work to do, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Thanks, Sarah. All right, next item is senior youth ARPA funding via Monroe County. As Carrie pulls up the chart, I'll kind of go through an overview. We've had a number of discussions with departments, which all plays into the budget on, you know, what comes from which bucket, if you will. And most of these, the town boards are aware, we've kind of reviewed it. So shade structures, split between Rothfuss and the community center. I think we're at 129,000. We talked about a passenger van with wheelchair lift for 100,000. We're gonna finish the library replacement, so currently in the budget, I believe, is for the children's room lighting, and we're gonna complete the lighting in the library or potentially with these funds. We talked about pickleball lighting. To finish the lighting, the bases in place, the conduit, and it just seemed to make sense to finish the project with the lighting. Just when I was out there the other day, either they're, they gotta cover those bases because they're right by the netting and someone's gonna get hurt. So we need to build the lighting to protect people or cover it. And then we talked about filter water stations at various parks and lodges, 15,000 for five of them. Then park table seating. The one thing that I don't think we mentioned to the town board is someone suggested AEDs, which makes a lot of sense. It's, and maybe you can touch on that, Carrie?
That was an idea that Andrew had submitted, provided an email to Sarah, and she forwarded along to me so I could update the table in the Google Drive. And so the AEDs, I think, are gonna be a requirement at some point, and so this seems like a good opportunity. And certainly at our parks, those are places where youth and seniors are certainly gathered, and so it seems like a good amenity potentially to add to our various parks and public spaces.
And Carrie, remind me that total's a little more than that, but we figured if we have extra money, we can allocate it to another water filtration or another AED or?
Yeah, so the total amount was 431,700 and change. So this particular combination gets you very close, and then it allows for, if there's variations in any of the costs, individual costs, because these are placeholder cost estimates. You know, mostly, for example, the shade structure that was provided by a manufacturer as a per unit. So you could increase or decrease the number of shade units depending on how or where the two locations where they were identified were for Rothfuss Park, which could use more shade structures potentially, and then also the Penfield Community Center library in and around that building as well. And so two, one to two were anticipated there. And this was like the more pared-down list. Other options were identified, and those are based on previous ARPA discussions at the town board level, so some carryover items. And then also new thoughts or suggestions based on department head input.
Good. Can I ask a real quick question about the AEDs? Do we know what their lifespan is? If they're used, do you have to replace it? You know, is it like a?
If the battery life? Certainly, we can get that information.
Right, I don't, I don't, I think they're a great idea.
The batteries will eventually expire as well as the pads.
Right.
The equipment itself usually has a pretty long lifespan.
So it's not like an airbag?
No, but a lot of times you'll have to replace the pads because they just expire. So, but a little bit of ongoing maintenance, but I think it's a great idea. I think we need to have them.
I forgot we had a resident expert on the town board. I do apologize.
I was looking it up. I was looking it up.
We also talked about like where to put them, and they need to be in a secure location to a certain extent, right? I mean?
Yeah, so I think certainly Andrew had provided the list of lodges or park locations where they could be, should be located and potentially accessible and mounted. And for the larger, like for example, for veterans, you'd potentially have them in a couple of, two or three locations throughout the park so that they're located in approximation to where people are gathering.
Maybe we just need some kind of a inspection schedule.
Okay.
You just have to have somebody check them every month or whatever you want to do, but.
I do think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Any discussion or?
And then just one note for the water, I know it says filter water station at the library community center. That was initially the recommendation through the previous ARPA discussions, but they, we have those type of fillable stations. And so I know that in the notes up above, we noted that there are other parks that have standard water fountains that could be replaced. So Harris, certainly I'm not, I'm looking to Tim and/or Joe to come up and chat, but I think it's, Harris Wellen would be certainly one. Rothfuss, I think, could use.
Rothfuss. Rothfuss, Harris Wellen, the bathrooms by the tennis courts. There's options.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think if we have the water already there, you know, you just use that filter. And again, there's probably some ongoing costs there. I would think it's minimal to just change a filter or if it breaks or something, right?
Yes.
I think some of these were conversion over to the bottle filler style, too. So those are available for the reusable or refillable.
Right, right.
So I think some of those are conver, yup, we've got them here. We added it to the new bathroom. We just put it in Veterans Park, and then there are also gonna be one at Shadow Pine. So I think we're trying to move towards those as well that make it not only a drinking fountain, but accessible for the refillable water bottles.
So we need to, since we have to dedicate this?
So we could, we would be looking to, between now and the end of the year, for certain need of resolution committing the funds, we could do something similar, or we, you, the town board, we could craft the resolution that provides some flexibility, identifies the targeted projects that want to be covered through this available funding, and then provide that clause that allows it to be shifted among the items based on what the final costs are.
I think one thing missing here that I think was brought up for prior discussion with the other ARPA funds was potentially upgrading, adding, upgrading, adding air conditioning to the community center for the senior programs, steer programs, and Penfield players. I don't know if that is still something being considered or if that was moved elsewhere.
I think that hopefully the gymnasium air conditioning will help significantly the Penfield players because that's where they put everything on, and you know, they've got a stage there.
That's in the budget, isn't it?
That was in the last ARPA. We approved the.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
But I'm one.
Did we?
Yes, yeah, we put it in the last ARPA. And I don't know if the rest of the community center, I think it's okay. I've never noticed that it's too warm over there, but maybe we should ask.
That wasn't brought up by anyone that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I think the only, I understand was only the gymnasium was identified as an area of need.
I think so. I think that's.
I know. I'm looking at the.
The gym was pointed out as a area of need in air conditioning.
Yeah, that's where they have the dances, senior dances, band, orchestra.
Is that also where the ambulance and firefighters play dodgeball in full gear?
Yes, they're last night.
Yes, it is.
Wanted to join. Still wanted to join.
How is that happening? And I don't even know. That, I need, is that a thing? I need to.
That might make me play next time.
I was there last night and they were playing dodgeball.
Is there betting involved?
They had the whole mask or whatever, oxygen tank and everything, yeah. I thought it was impressive.
And then, so another thing that came up during other budget review from the Parks and Rec Department was programming for youth, and so I didn't see that here, but I understand that this spreadsheet solicited feedback from everybody. So was there other screening of that? Screening of ideas, and we're seeing a filtered version, or?
So I think that that was identified as a potential, and then the concern or issue was, should the focus be on sort of one-time, like finite costs and identifying either equipment or items that could be purchased as a one-time?
An ongoing support, right, service?
Yes, yeah, versus offsetting what are standard, like other, like existing costs associated with programming, but you know, that.
Can we send that to, actually, never mind. I can send to Andy if the board's comfortable. I understand, you know, that idea, but I thought we had heard from him also development into programming or additional improvements of like the kitchen area, right? And that would benefit both deer and some of the lunch or meals that are serviced out of that kitchen, and that would, you know?
That would be, that would be something that is beneficial to a far greater audience in some of these. You know, I don't want to come down on pickleball. I don't want to be the anti-pickleball at all, but again, that is a, you know, that's a finite.
I could, I could talk to Andy about that. I need to meet with him on the budget overall to find it. But I'll share this, the discussion was more of hard costs only because then it would be in the budget. However, what I learned today, too, just because I was in a meeting with a county, is the way they defined it actually was this funding is meant to bring people together. So it absolutely includes that, Candace, youth and senior classes. And they mentioned kitchen equipment. I know that the kitchen had a big upgrade last year, didn't?
They did on the Ruth Berman side of the hall. They redid that space. I don't know to what level, and not sure about the other side, but.
I didn't know there was another side, another kitchen, but maybe.
The main.
There is the main one, and then it's the center. It's, yeah.
So we have a little time. I also learned, maybe you know this, the IMA, we'll get the IMA by the end of this month, I was told, but it doesn't have to be signed to the end of the year. And then I think we have two years to spend it. Does that concur with you, Carrie?
Yeah, my understanding is that the money's gotta be committed before the end of the year allocated, and then you've got until the end of 2026 to actually expend the funds that are being made available through ARPA. So we can put this on the agenda for next work session?
Sure.
And right now, you're, the above table shows us at 1.3, so we're over.
Yeah, so and then that's why.
If we want to go with that.
Right, so and then the big ticket item that we didn't mention in here is, you know, you could, if you wanted, the Channing Philbrick is on, later on, the agenda that's...
I'll talk about that shortly.
It's a bridge replacement. So that was put in there as a potential, but, and any amount could be allocated to that project from the, through this ARPA funding.
Can I ask for the passenger van with wheelchair lift and space versus the 15-passenger only? What was the thinking to eliminate one of those vans?
So the initial, so initially, Recreation identified the need for a converted van that has wheelchair lift and wheelchair capacity. That would be used in addition to the existing vans that we have to support programming and field trips of various age groups. So the preference was for the van with the wheelchair capacity. Then if that was not deemed, you know, desirable, could another, just adding another van to the fleet be contemplated? And there is a difference in costs. The difference you see is just reflecting in the.
Oh, yeah, it's the modification. I get it.
And that passenger, oh, sorry, go ahead.
How many do we have for passenger vans currently?
There's two 12-passenger vans currently.
Two 12-passenger vans currently.
What's the age on those? Is one of them old? One of them?
That, I don't have off the top of my head, so we certainly could get that information, though.
That might help determine.
Decide. Right.
I did talk to the town supervisor today in Parenton, who has a new wheelchair lift van. They use it, and they're happy to have it for what it's worth. But, yeah, we can answer those questions, too, for the next work session.
And they're currently using one?
Yes, oh, yeah, yup.
I would be interested in finding out what the insurance costs come with something like that.
So I don't know if we got an answer, but we just met with our liability insurance. I can't remember if we got an answer or not, but.
I know that Andrew was gathering information about the van specs to provide to Sarah so that she could share that information and get more, get details. So that's something that's in the works. She may already have the answer, or she's in the process of obtaining it.
Yeah.
For the board's consideration.
Okay, so kind of table this for the next work session, get some more answers. All right. All right, I think we're, Joe and Tim. Next action item is a DPW construction project site work change order. Joe and Tim, you can lead this discussion.
Take it away. So basically, we have a couple asks here. We've been updating the town board on some of the construction avenues that we've taken over there at the town, or at the town barns over there, the DPW. We have come into some unsuitable soils. We were contracted for that for a certain amount. It was like 17,000 yards. We are over that. So our ask is, our ask is to allocate a resolution for the 300,000, 300,000, or $309,000 for the overage on the unsuitable soils.
And I'll just add to that discussion, I did talk to MRB today, and I would say... And I would say it's not definite, but generally you find, and chime in Mark or Carrie, or Joe for that matter, that most of these things are found out when you're, you've got a shovel on the ground. Once we get the structure started, generally speaking, that, that is more predictable.
Yeah, over the years of my involvement in construction work, I've worked on state projects and stuff. Had borings be done on a job. You bid the job, and you go out and you literally dig five foot from where that boring is and find out that you have unsuitable material on the job. We were very fortunate here with the number they provided. They were very close with their numbers, very good with their estimate. And, and that fact, the fact that they ran over is very unpredictable. Once you start into those, it could have been worse. I think they did a good job to this point.
And are they done? Or will this continue?
Uh, there may be another one coming. They have some utilities rolling along the north side of the building. That hasn't been determined yet until they start that part, that part of the project.
So yeah, it is my understanding that we are working on a cost flow tracking system for the town board so we can keep everybody updated on our, all the change orders, the allowances, that kind of thing. This is the first really big one, and it should be the biggest one that we're coming up against. Because again, it's the unknown. We were very lucky that when we made up this contract, there was a set price for all this instead of being, being price gouged on other unsuitables. So yeah, we are working on a tracking system for all of the change orders. But yes, this is the, obviously, this is the first really big one. We've been in communication with you guys as much as we can, and anytime we get an update on numbers, we pass that along.
When you say there's a set price, do you mean that this was already part of the bid? That they would include like a certain price per cubic yard or something like that?
Yes.
Which we're fortunate that that was in the bid, that all of a sudden, we just didn't expose that. And all of a sudden, the contractor goes on time and material, and you pay for every man on the job, every piece of machinery, until that's done. It gets very costly very fast.
So this is really a bid, it's a bid cost, but we don't know, we didn't know what the quantity was, so.
Yep. And, and also with that price tracking system, I know we came in on it when we set out the bid for the actual building. We were under the bid by quite a bit. And working with MRB, they found some old paperwork, older, like a year older, that they came up with. And this is, since we're so far under, we were under the bid, that there was some kind of, I'm not going to say allowance because that's a different term for a different, but we're still under budget right now, even with this.
And for, yeah, I was just going to say for the board and for the public, I think we were able to bond up to 30 million. If, is that right, for this project? But it came in at 24.8 or something like that?
Yes, yes.
So that's the good part of it. And then I was just going to add, and maybe I said it before, part of one of the meetings next week that plays a little bit into the budget, or absolutely does, is a cash flow projection that MRB is working on that we will kind of take the ball with going forward. It's something Sarah and I will be working closely on with, with you guys as well. So.
And also as part of this, we were fortunate that the site had an abundance of material onsite that they were allowed to fill this area in with, so we didn't have to buy all that fill. This could have got very costly, and now we've been in the position we were in.
Joe, can you tell me for, because you mentioned that we came in under, and I, and that, that sounds good and is driving at least with our last update, but can you tell me where we currently are in the spend? And like what-
I'd have to look at that. We were putting that chart together. We just started gathering all that information. At this time, I don't have that available to tell you right offhand where we're at.
Okay, would you be able to just circulate an update for us so we can kind of like get a more global look to see where we are currently in the spend, how much to go in terms of projected spend? And then this variance of the 300,000, where that kind of puts us, right? Like, are we at least on track for where we are in the project? And MRB is saying, you know, phase one, you should be spending X dollars, like where are we relative to that budgeted spend? And then again, trying to see projections, because this is just the first of unexpected hurdles, right? And it's very early on in the project. And I'm sure more things come up as you dig under, right? And I just kind of want to see like, how are we tracking? And, you know?
Yeah, that's part of the cash flow, the cash flow Excel program that Maggie found for us and that we're going to update. And we can, once we get the numbers plugged in, then we can pass that along as soon as we get all the numbers updated.
And then I, I'd be interested to see them kind of like on a monthly basis. How does everyone feel?
I think that would be good.
At each of our work sessions?
Yep.
Yeah, at the work session, you know, maybe, sure. I, I think the board can probably use it on a monthly basis, and for the public, maybe like every quarter at least, right? Because we don't, I don't know that-
Yeah, that's fair.
Right? Or milestones in the project, like foundation is in, now four walls are in, right?
Yep. And, and again, just filling in, that's something that the department head can add to the department head notes for the town board before the work session that we hand out to you.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Yep.
Absolutely. And then if anything urgent obviously comes up or unforeseen, we'd share right away.
And, and one last question, you might not have the answer to this. But when MRB looked at this, and they talked about unusable soil, that, you know, we're going to, this could, this could go high. We don't know, but we're going to put in this little buffer, if you will. Are there other things in the project that are similar to that, like that are very specific? If we do this, we're going to put a little buffer there? Or is it now, are we going to get into just that general?
As, as far as I know, this is the big, the ground moving part, just because it's the unknowns. There's others parts of the project I've heard about, you know, you get into the infrastructure, you get into the piping. We have to move pipe a certain way. You got to add like a certain length, that kind of thing. That's where I think the allowances will come in.
Right.
But as of right now, this is the big ask, just because we have no idea what's under the ground.
Okay.
If I was, if I could know, I'd be on like Gold Rusher.
And particularly in Penfield, it's challenging to know what's under the ground. Bedrock is everywhere or nowhere, and there doesn't seem to be any rhyme or reason sometimes. So that's always a challenge.
Sure.
Yes, because we're trying to cross a road around bedrock, but yet where the, where the building is was all unsuitable. Had to be all filled in. There was no, so it doesn't make sense that, you know, 200 feet away is just terrible material. But up at the road around bedrock, it's, the town is very unpredictable. It's either rock boulders or-
So I guess the ask is, I've never done this before-
So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion for Tim and with Joe's help to go ahead and prepare the resolution to authorize the additional funds as the upcharge.
I'll second that.
Vote please, Sue.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Tecklish?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, next action item is Channing Philbrick elevated walkway. Mark?
So obviously, this is a project the board had authorized previously, so MRB's been working on it. Carrie's kind of sharing some photos. So these were just taken last week to kind of give both the board and the public an update on kind of the condition of the existing bridge, where we're going forward. So MRB came in and working with Tim and I on sharing where the, the plans are. They've got everything pretty much completed. We were working with them on looking at some staging areas, looking at spots they can have lay down for the equipment for the contractor, and then showing the contractor where it is going ahead of preparing the bid document. So as you're looking, this is the one main bridge. So there's three bridges today. In the future, there'll be one bridge. So we're going a little bit of before the first bridge, and then continuing all the way through. So this is the most recent bridge, which I believe was replaced in 2004. But as you can see, that's already kind of warped a bit. And then there's another photo that shows we've got a missing board on it. We've contacted the contractor, and thankfully, they've got some replacements. We can do that in the short term. But that was the best bridge. And then these, as we're looking at the sides, there's open gap areas for kids, animals, people walking on it to make it safer. So the new bridge, as we've shown in previous, and I don't have a sketch here, is the helical coil style. So basically, it's an aluminum bridge, and it comes in sections. So they'll go out and drill down out of the creek, they're on the shore, drill down these helical coils. Looks like a big screw. They drill in the ground, set the piece on, drive out on it, put the next piece in, so we stay above the water with it.
And that was the most, least invasive way for the DEC?
That was needed for the permitting for that. So we've got, they've obtained the DEC permits. We're all set with that. They're just waiting for the Army Corps letter, which is anticipated any time. So at this point, they're looking, is the board ready to go out to bid with this project? So they're looking, we're looking tonight as whether the board's ready to go ahead with that. Obviously, we'd need to, you know, advertise it, put it out. They're anticipating their estimated cost is around 750,000. So it's not cheap at all. But I think, you know, showing the pictures, it's, you know, it's necessary. Parrecton had completed their Spring Lake Park project at the beginning of this year, had some, you know, ribbon cutting on that. Now, you know, obviously, our side needs some, some help with that. So if we put it out to bid kind of this fall into winter, would look at a, you know, construction in through and completion next summer.
And is that, is the construction similar to what we did with Allen's Creek, where we can only do it during a certain time? Because the DEC says there's-
Thankfully, this one, we're not working in the water. So I know there's some, and I think we may run into long-eared bat stuff with taking some trees down. So that would be the only thing with the timing on, on that end of it, but it's not actually in the water. Allen's Creek, we were in the, in the water. We had to pump the creek down, bypass it. This, we're working on the shoulder on the side. So we're not under those same constraints.
Yeah, less hoops to jump through on this end.
But if we go to bid this fall, hopefully, we get contractors that are hungry, looking for work for next spring and summer. So we're hopefully more apt to get, you know, better prices.
The only difference or challenge is the proximity, is getting to it and staging it.
It's not an easy access point, and that's one of the things we walked it and wanted to make very clear when the contractors go out there, that they're a third of a mile from where their construction spot is when they're parking in the parking lot. So that includes bringing in concrete, you know, other stuff. There's some concrete pads at the beginning, most of their materials, and then a concrete pad at the end. So they're going to have some logistical issues, and that's part of the cost increases, just how do you get back there with it? You know, thankfully, they can work from the platform, drill the next piece, drop it on, and, you know, stay on the shoreline. But that's part of the construction cost, or why it is just the access to it. It's not easy, as you indicated.
I wish we could just use a rope bridge, but we can't.
It's kind of what we're moving right now.
It feels a little bit like that when you're, when you're on. It's one of my favorite parks to walk, and-
Yeah, I mean, it's a beautiful location, a beautiful, beautiful spot, you know, beautiful trail, so. If the board has any-
So we need a motion?
Comments and concerns, but if the board wants to put a motion to, you know, put this out to bid, we'll, you know, start on that. And then obviously, once we know, get bids in dollars, we'll be back, you know, for the board to consider that and for award and everything else.
I'll make a motion to put this out to bid so we can start collecting responses.
I'll second. That was great.
Nobody was jumping.
Candace, second. Vote please, Sue.
Oh, Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Tecklish?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, next action item, Allen's Creek tree replacement. Mark?
So this is a follow-up to our Allen's Creek project, which you just both spoke about. So we're at the very end of that project. So we originally started in 2012, many years of permitting. We're actually coming to the end of the stream creek erosion portion. So that was the original bid. So JB Excavating's been doing a great job. The neighbors all seem happy with the work they've done. We did a nice tour on Saturday with the Watershed Committee. So we walked the backyard, showed them what was going on. The contractor's now is working on the stream or the house side restorations. They've got some topsoil seed to do. One thing that we didn't put in their bid because we didn't know how much and which way we could do it, so it depended on which contractor, was basically the replacement of trees we removed along the way. So depending upon which contractor got it, some, we kind of left the means and methods up to them. This contractor was comfortable with putting a pump in, working right in the creek bed, bypass pumping. So looking at the number of 60 trees, sounds like a lot, but given the backyard and the area and, you know, the impact to it, if we had built a road in their backyard going through, the number would have been two to three times that. So we did minimize those. But we're looking at basically a replacement cost. And we've kind of, Amy's done a nice job of each house going, who lost which trees? I mean, some were possibly a dead ash tree overlying the creek. We're not trying to say alive or dead, but just try to, you know, get the people back, some trees with that. So we're scheduled for next week to go down with Bruce Saretsky, our landscape consultant, have him look at the areas. And then I recommend native species trees, you know, for the residents to consider, look at, you know, is it shady spot? Is it an open spot? What might work for them? And then, you know, to work with them for the replacement. And then we've got one patio that we've got to replace that we had to take out. There was a big concrete wall that was in the way on a patio of a resident that we had to remove, you know, as part of the project. So we said we would replace a smaller portion of it. The patio was much, much larger.
Can you explain further on that? So how was the patio like in, in an area that it shouldn't have been? Was it encroaching on town property? I'm just trying to understand. That's, that's personal property, so why are we liable for that?
It was a spot we had to basically readjust the alignment of the creek. So we were going into the person's property further than we were before. So that was basically a negotiation with them that in order to make the creek flow better, we had to kind of change the alignment. So it did a 90-degree turn there. There was a wall, and there was a patio on top of that. So we adjusted the alignment of the creek. It went into their personal property. So that was, you know, something we had talked about and-
It's a question for Pete. So where the water now flows, is that going to be by adverse possession or something like this? Is that going to become part of town or municipal or any type of coverage?
Because we don't own the creek, right?
We don't own the creek.
We don't own any land down there. We've just basically gone as a water of the US. And then we, you know, negotiated grading releases from all the neighbors to work on, on their upland part of the property.
Right. And so that would be like the agreement that you would have negotiated would control like the ability to access those properties and then take down there, in this case, a part of the patio.
Yeah.
And, and thank you. So like, it's already been done, right? So I, I'm trying to understand like future liability or future access maintenance? Or what happens if the creek overflows and because we diverted it, right? And I'm assuming with consent of the owner, obviously, since we're repairing a portion of the patio. But if the creek overflows and then floods the entire patio, and then floods a portion of their house, to what extent is the town liable?
We would, sorry, no.
No, go ahead.
I say we would look to relocate the patio further away from the creek, just on that, you know, that portion, so it wouldn't be in that same area that it was before. So hopefully-
And they were okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
So.
Any quotes yet on that patio? On what, that might cost?
Don't, no. I mean, we kind of rough estimated it. I'm hoping it's under that. Obviously, we'll come back once we have, you know, exact cost on what the patio is and, you know, exact, you know, cost on the trees. We're going off of county contract on the trees, so Cardinal Landscape is the county bid price for that.
And is the county contract for the patio replacement?
I haven't found one, and that's the part I got to look at. So I probably likely have to get three quotes for that.
So we'll have to put this out to bid and-
If it's 15, it'd be under the-
If it's under 30, if it's under 30,000, we would just get three quotes. If it's between 10 and 30, we get three quotes and, you know, come back, and then we can authorize from that, so.
So it'd be under our procurement policy until you get to the bidding threshold.
Okay. And so you're going to still, you'll require a resolution then for, to authorize? Or are you just going to pick the lowest bidder of the three that you find?
Obviously, I'll come back and talk with the board, you know, whether we need a resolution, or obviously, you know, brief the board about it, just to make sure that, you know, the board is comfortable with it.
Do you guys feel that he needs to come back for the resolution?
I don't.
I don't.
I don't either.
As long as it's under the threshold.
As long as that-
Yeah, if obviously exceeds the 30,000, then I'll be back for further conversation.
I mean, if you find one that, wait, no, 30? It says 15.
Sorry, 15. I'm sorry, looking across and seeing trees at 30 that-
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, and then what for the total restoration cost, where is that coming from the budget?
It's coming out of the Drainage Fund. So that was contemplated. We do still have Drainage Fund budget for this year, so not asking for any additional transfer dollars. So we should be covered by that for both of us.
What do you need from us tonight? Just a blessing?
I think just a blessing to move ahead with this and make sure the board is comfortable. Anytime we're expending money, just make sure the board understands the why and the where.
And I saw the pictures. I went to the Watershed Committee meeting last night, or last week, and they did show a lot of pictures of how they're doing and what, what the work has been, and how it started, and how they diverted the water. It was, it was actually quite impressive.
We got lucky with the contractor. We did. Not saying others couldn't have done it, but he definitely knows his way around water and, and working with it. And I think that's what scared a lot of the other contractors, is just working in that environment. You got to have a big rain. We've had a hurricane this summer, we've had a couple of big rains. He just shuts the pumps down and kind of lets it flow through and goes off the job for a few days, comes back and gets back right into it, bypass pump. So, you know, he definitely is comfortable working with the water. He's actually leaving our job to go work for the DEC. So he's working for them in Lechworth after this. So, you know, they're obviously very comfortable with them. We were, you know, lucky to have them, so.
He has a passion for this.
He does. He definitely, it's, it's a passion for him. He's done other construction, and he's found something in this. And he's been, worked all over the country, and we were lucky to get him back.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, good, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. So no informational items. There's one held item, the local law, to amend the EPOD that we're going to-
That's still under review with the ECC. So we'll be back at a future work session to continue that conversation.
And we have new, one new agenda item?
New business item, if everybody doesn't mind, the idea- New business item, if everybody doesn't mind the idea. The, Pete could certainly speak to it further, but there's been, there's a need to update a portion of our code pertaining to animal control. If the board is comfortable, we'd like to bring resolution to introduce the local law at the October meeting. That would set a public hearing for November meeting so that the local law could be considered at a future date. So resolution would be to amend the process outlining the, and maybe Pete, you can speak to this better than I can.
So Steve Schicker and I started this conversation back in December. We, kind of, there was a, a need to tweak some of the provisions about where dogs are allowed and not allowed. For example, our code currently says you're not allowed to have dogs in stores, for example. But there are stores like pet stores and Home Depot where you can freely take your dog. So we didn't want to create a situation where we're conflicting with what an owner may, may want, an operator of a store. There have also been some issues where there are some repeat customers, if you will, that find themselves often before the courts on dog matters, whether it's unlicensed dogs, barking dogs, probably not so much dangerous dogs. But there was this question about could we strengthen something in the code for like irresponsible dog owners where you have a certain number of violations in a short period of time where, you know, there gives the court a little more authority to, you know, take the dogs from the owners. And so we've kind of built that into the code. There was also recently, while we had this kind of under discussion, I had heard some information, some requests from Oakwood Cemetery that they don't mind people, responsible dog owners walking in the cemetery. And so they were looking to maybe have that changed. And so we took that opportunity to fix that and take that out.
Yeah, we were regulating where dogs can be.
Yeah.
And not everyone wants that regulate, like private property owners don't necessarily want to be regulated in that way.
And certainly, an owner could restrict and say, you can't come on my property. Or a business could say, I don't want dogs on my property. But the way the code was written, it was a blanket exclusion. And so we wanted to pull that back a little bit. And then we also addressed, you know, dogs in public prop buildings like our building with the, you know, permission of the supervisor or animal control officer to allow that to happen. And so those are the main changes. Otherwise, it's not anything too significant except for the irresponsible dog provision.
So I have two questions for the...
Wait, what did I say?
Irresponsible dog.
Oh.
That's...
I knew what you meant. Oh, it's always...
For the changes to H, I saw that the red lines were to enter public buildings or restaurants, comma, unless authorized by the animal security officer or supervisor. And when I, I think I understand the intent, but the way that I read it, because of the way that it's modified, it's that the supervisor or the animal control officer has authority over the private restaurant. And I don't think that's what we mean, right?
Oh, right. No, that should be the...
For public buildings.
Public buildings. So we can fix that before it goes out.
Yeah, so what we will be doing is preparing the resolution introducing the local law.
Yep.
We can make the tweak to the attachment.
That's, so I'd like that to be clarified because I don't, I don't intend to give any town authority over private places of business. And then it's just a thought for board consideration and for public consideration for the irresponsible person. It's two citations, two convictions on two citations in a calendar year. And I don't know if it, I don't know, I don't know if two is too little, you know? I don't know how quickly you can repeat offend. So I like to think three strikes and then you're out, you know? So two just, you know, and again, I don't think our court system or our justice system is capricious, but I think two is a very low threshold. And then, and the penalty is to confiscate the dog for up to three years?
Well, yeah, it would be to confiscate the dog and then the dog would be, I guess, I think the thinking is, you know, would be put up for readoption or, you know, so it wouldn't necessarily go back to the owner, but they would be prohibited from having a dog for three years.
Yeah, up to three years. So for me, and again, I am like not a huge animal person, but, but I just pointed out for those that are, you offend twice, but then the penalty seemed disproportionate in length because we're taking two in 12 months, but you're prohibited from three years. And then to confiscate personal property or just a member of the family or however people view it. And then to put them up for adoption without any potential recourse or rehabilitation plan or ability to now prove for a compliance or probation period for six months if you don't reoffend, like it just seemed really drastic. And again, I don't have strong feelings about it. I just bring it up for discussion or if others feel strongly about it, I just want to...
I feel strongly about that, yeah. I think that does sound very, I think that sounds very severe without understanding what are those exact charges? You know, I mean, we're not talking about a dangerous dog.
No, this would be a dangerous dog.
Because that would fall something out.
Yeah, because a dangerous dog provision, you know, that is kind of addressed right away through a different process. This is more, you know, there's been a lot of problems where people don't get licenses ever, you know? And they, and so it's really to kind of get these people to make sure that they're licensing their dogs.
Right.
I don't know how much barking is a concern, but I know that the licensing was a real concern a while ago, so.
Or it could be also issues with loose dog.
Right.
Sort of frequent, like a frequent occurrence of dogs not being adequately detained, like maintained in the yard or kept on leash, you know? That could be that type of a thing as well.
So a proposal that I had for consideration by the town and the board is if you are an irresponsible owner, like analogous of if you're an irresponsible driver and you are a repeat offender occurring, incurring six violation points in a short period of time, but it is still your privilege to drive and DMV hasn't revoked it, you pay an increase in terms of insurance or you pay an increase to obtain your license. So if they wanted to license the dog again, instead of $25, if you're now irresponsible, I would recommend $100 or $75 or whatever. Or if you continue to repeat after probationary periods, right? Then maybe there could be another penalty of you're going to be like compliance reporting or something like this. And I, again, I say it with the caution of if you confiscate a dog and then you put it up for adoption, but then I have no idea if it's not adopted, is that dog put down? I have absolutely no idea. I'm just asking the question. So the consequences seemed pretty severe in my mind for something that's like, it's not a dangerous dog.
Yeah, Pete, I, and I didn't, I didn't look at it. See, I don't disagree with Linda. I'm thinking, gee, I could take my, one of my dogs right now based on what we just talked about. Kidding. But I'd like to, I'm curious what other towns do. And maybe we just table it and rethink it a little bit.
Well, I would make the resolution that it at least be for the public hearing so we can keep it moving in the process.
Sure.
And then based on public feedback, right?
Right.
People who actually own dogs, you know?
So there is a, I mean, there is a penalty provision already. It's in section 1090-10, which says that, you know, it should be up, subject to a fine, which shall not be less than 25, no more than $250, except that. Where a person is found to violate this chapter within the preceding five years, the fine shall not be less than 50 nor more than 500. And then two or more violations of this chapter within the preceding five years, the fine shall not be less than 100 or more than 1,000. So maybe this could, what we could do is redraft the irresponsible dog provision to maybe better dovetail off of these provisions and kind of pick up after that third offense here. Might be a better way to do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to agree with that. Those are good points.
Yeah, I think it's the way forward.
So I'll go again, the resolution or the motion for a resolution to be prepared for at least the public hearing to be posted and held.
I'll second.
Okay, vote please, Sue.
Barry?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Taglish?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, any, anything else I'm missing? Okay, we'll adjourn this meeting at 7:29. Our next meeting actually is October 16th.